I'd like to call the meeting to order and welcome everybody. Can we please have the roll call?
Lou, here.
Bozeman.
Here.
Disharms.
Here.
Posthafter.
Here.
Campbell's.
Here.
Reese.
Here.
Fallon.
Here.
Could everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to our republic, whose existence one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Okay, we will move to the public participation portion of the meeting and Dr. Parker will begin with the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our October meeting. We'll start with our safety minute and we'll first see if I have volunteers, make sure I have volunteers to call 911, first aid responders, and also people who are certified in CPR. If you could raise your hand, please. Thank you very much. As a reminder, our exits are off to my right and my left and our AED machine is out in our main hallway. We updated our current enrollment today at 4,478 students, which is about 58 fewer students than last year at this time. And in spite of our decreasing enrollment for the year overall, we're going to schedule a facilities meeting in November with our board to discuss options and recommendations we have for handling our middle school growth as well as our district office. We have our parent-teacher conferences starting tomorrow with time set aside also for our volunteers to be fingerprinted here in the district from 1:15 to 4:30. And that'll be at Hickory Grove. This is just offered as a convenience to all of our families that are wanting to volunteer so they don't need to travel downtown for fingerprinting. So if you know of someone who needs to be fingerprinted and has not done so yet, encourage them to do that tomorrow. Our school climate survey is now available to all of our parents. It'll also be at our schools tomorrow and Friday and our staff and our students. I know several have already taken that, but that'll be available to them up until November 3rd. And probably the most important thing to me this week is it's Principal Appreciation Week and I want to take a moment just to thank all of my building principals and thank you for your work and your dedication to our district. You're invaluable to me. I feel like we have a very strong group of leaders here and I can always count on them to advocate for their staff and put their students first in all their decision-making. So, thank you to all of you. The last two days, the district office was willing and able and excited to get to come to the buildings and we spent our afternoons being principal for the day, or principal for the afternoon, I should say. And as a sign of our appreciation, we gave the principals an afternoon off courtesy of the district office and I think it was just as valuable for them as it was for us. We got to spend a little time in classrooms that we don't always get to do and got to talk with staff and so thank you for letting us do that and I know you appreciated the time as well. We also have some very good news to share here in the district. Received our first sales tax payment in the amount of $110,202. That was for the month of July, so that's right on target to where we were predicted to be, so thank you to those who shop locally, which continues to help our district. We also had one FOIA request from the Parents Foundation for Education for demographic information on our teaching staff and one request from the American Watch Dogs Research Project for financial and compensation information for the district. So this concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll move on to public participation. If there's anybody who would like to address the board, please raise your hand. Okay, seeing none, we will move on. And this concludes the public participation portion of the meeting. We'll now move on to the information and discussion items. School activity account reports are available for the board's review. Are there any questions? Information regarding the high school random drug testing report for the month of September is available in the board's packet. Mrs. Caslet is available to answer any questions. Are there any questions? Okay. Information regarding the 2018-19 school calendar is available for the board's review. Dr. Parker is available to answer any questions. Are there any questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
When I was reading all the survey results, it looks like when you put that calendar together, you just chose the ones with the highest percentage. Is that correct?
I believe for the most part.
For the most part?
Mm-hmm.
Because some are very, very close. Very close.
Was there one you wanted to look at?
No.
Okay.
Okay. Information regarding trade-in and purchase of transportation vehicles is available in the packet for the board's review. Mrs. Beverlin is available to answer any questions. Are there any questions? Information regarding the DHS summer school classes is available in the packet for board's review. Mr. Adrian is available to answer any questions. Are there any questions? Okay. So happy that that's being expanded. I think that everybody will be really happy with that. A presentation by Mrs. Jennings will be made on enrichment eagles per the board request from the September Board of Education meeting. So, I'm going to come forward.
I just want to make you all aware, we have a teacher who I misinformed sent her to the wrong place. So, she's on her way here and she's going to present at the end of the presentation, so I'm going to go kind of slow.
Okay.
But she will be on her way. Per last month's future agenda item request, we put together some information to share tonight on the enrichment eagles status in our current program offerings. So, go ahead and pull that up. Okay, on this first slide, I went through and pulled the numbers for all of our participants. These are current participants. It's broken up basically by a third for each grade, so it's pretty evenly distributed. I also ran numbers to compare from last year to this year and so we did see a little bit of growth when compared to the enrollment for that year. So, for 2016-2017, it was 12.9 compared to that year's enrollment for 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade students. And then this year, it went up to 13%, so a little bit of growth. So there we see some growth. Here are the numbers from the beginning of the program, which was 2012, to current, today's numbers. You can see there's quite a bit of growth. We're maintaining around the 130 mark, so quite a bit more than when we first started the program. Anybody have questions on this? Okay. I also just broke it down by that particular cohort. So if we follow the 4th grade students from their 3rd grade year to their 4th grade year, we grew by 13 students and the 5th grade classes grew by 7. And here's just a pretty chart to break it up. If you follow the colors, it's color-coded and so each year you can see that there's a gain for every grade level. We keep the kiddos that we bring in and we're able to bring in more. I also wanted to bring up some park correlation here. This year, our district had 24 perfect scores on the park. Out of those 24 perfect scores, 17 were enrichment eagle students. And this is the breakdown of how that goes. It also shows on this chart the number of students who had more than one year of enrichment eagles.
So they get in enrichment eagles by...
No. No, these students were already enrichment eagles and then when they took the park, they were enrichment eagle status, I guess.
Okay.
So I went through and tracked that data.
Park would be one of the components to determine whether they get into...
No.
Okay. How do they get into...
Yes.
Yeah, sorry.
This was just students who were already enrichment eagles. I went through and looked at their park scores. Out of those park scores...
No, I get that, but how do they get into enrichment eagles?
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I apologize. We run a grid and I actually am going to refer to Heather because she knows the process a little bit better than I do.
Sure. So we take a look at their STAR scores in both reading and math and then their COGAT scores are broken down. There are several different areas of COGAT that are pulled. There's the overall composite, but then there are specific areas as well. And those, and then there's a teacher recommendation as well. Then all of those get compiled together to create the overall C score. And then we look at the top 12 to 15% for enrichment eagles and take a look at within that 12 to 15% where the largest break is in the C scores is how we determine where the cut score is.
Oh, okay.
So it really, it depends on that cohort of students.
Right.
And what their performance level is to determine who is going to be in there. And every difference score in there contributes to the overall composite score.
So you must be invited based on scores?
Correct.
Got it. No, that's okay. Thank you. I can remember.
Any questions on this slide before I move ahead? Now I am going to turn it over to Ms. Leslie.
Hi. My name is Leslie and I am one of the sponsors of the enrichment eagles program at Hickory Grove Elementary School. So as you can see, the three goals of the program for enrichment eagle students is we want our students to be creative, critical thinkers, effective communicators, and collaborative problem solvers. This past spring, enrichment eagle sponsors met with Heather Roman and refreshed the program so that it better meets the needs of students and aligns with these goals. The program refresh includes units that rotate throughout the schools. Each unit emphasizes teamwork and leadership skills while engaging students and tapping into their creativity through the use of hands-on materials. One of our first units is robotics and the robotics program was initiated three years ago by a parent, Mr. Beckar. He had a student in the program at Hickory Grove and he approached us and said, "Hey, can we try robotics?" He's an enthusiast and his passion is just electrifying for robotics. Never thought I would say, "I'm really into robotics," but I am. And that's just from working with him and seeing the students' excitement. Mr. Beckar continues to lead this program. He plans and creates all lessons and also volunteers his time to lead every robotics session. This unit is also made possible through the 20 EB3 robotics kits on loan from Caterpillar. Students work together in teams to accomplish different tasks with the roulette. The first two years focused on building and basic programming, but this year we've kicked it up a notch. The teams are competing against one another in different missions. Along with the success of their mission, students are being evaluated on their presentations, teamwork, and research. So that's just one unit. Our next unit is STEM activities. STEM stands for science, technology, engineering, and math. STEM activities can be one short session such as building a catapult with given materials like popsicle sticks and rubber bands, or they can be long-term projects that span several enrichment eagle sessions. Currently in our STEM program at Hickory Grove, students are completing a peak rollercoaster challenge. Students are designing and building rollercoasters using cardstock. They have to fold the different components similar to origami while adhering to requirements about the rollercoaster's height and including different components such as slides and turns and loops. The winner is the team whose rollercoaster has the most successful runs with the cheapest amount, is the cheapest, was the cheapest one to build. Okay, next is a making-making unit. A making-making are invention kits. Making-making, the inventors of it, believe that there's inventor in everyone and they make user-friendly kits to make it easy for young minds to push the limits of their imagination. Using a simple switchboard and wiring a set of stairs, using a simple switchboard and wires, you can turn a set of stairs into a keyboard or Play-Doh can become a Nintendo controller. The students are again working in teams to create an invention using these kits, a computer, and their endless creativity. And with the making-making kit, we have paired it with a green screen project. In a spin-off of the TV show Shark Tank, students have to take their invention that they created with their teens using making-making and they have to pitch it to the other students. So they're able to take a video in front of the green screen and then use computer editing to enhance it for their presentation. Our next unit is breakout EDU and this unit takes out the breakout room concept that's become so popular by puts an educational spin on it. Students must work together to solve challenges and to decipher codes and erase against each other. And our last one is Littlebits. Littlebits combines coding skills with simple Lego light building blocks and a circuit board to let students' creativity run wild. Thanks to magnetic ends, students are able to put together the different components such as batteries, sensors, and switches easily. Students can build a flashlight or a wireless doorbell in a chippy. And I believe we actually have a video. Littlebits is one that I think is best to see in, in order to get a good idea about it.
Nope. Why it's not? I promise it just worked.
And this is actually one of the students at Ridgeview. Ridgeview is currently using the Littlebits kits right now. So, we created a Facebook page this year to allow parents to see what's going on in real time and it's also great because you get an idea of what's going on at the other schools as well since different schools are completing different units.
Well, she's working on that. Any questions?
Yeah.
Beth, go ahead.
Yeah.
Or Cheryl.
I just, so you said there's seven units and...
There, mhm.
Yeah, and so are all 3rd graders and all 4th graders and all 5th graders doing all seven units?
Yeah, they are. And they're working in teams that are across their grade levels on these units, which is great because it gives some of the older kids a chance to really shine in their leadership skills and they become more competent as they go through the program. And then it allows 3rd graders to, you know, look up to their peers and then see what's expected of them in the years to come. So, yeah, it's really, really great.
Do you, is there, well, a couple of questions.
Yeah.
Is there a STEM component that has been added to all science, so not even, I'm not talking enrichment eagles, but specifically to the science program?
In the next generation's, excuse me, science standards, yes, there are elements of that that are brought in and the new science series that we're using this year, K5, is really helping with that.
The next question then was, because I was curious, I don't, you know, I know we have enrichment eagles for the kids who's, you know, meet the criteria, but what about those other kids? Because some of those kids too could benefit from some of this, so wondering if some of the, the lessons that you teach in enrichment eagles may be integrated into the classroom so that other kids also could...
Yeah, and I think with the next generation science series, like Heather said they do, and I know teachers within my own building that they do STEM activities too. And I taught summer school this summer, Title I summer school, and each week our guided reading book that we focused on, we then had a STEM activity to conclude that. So we read a book that was nonfiction about tarantulas and then at the end of the week, we had kids build a web that could support a textbook using only plastic bags. So I think the teachers know that this is something that's really beneficial to kids and they're finding ways to incorporate it into their classrooms too.
And how many children, do you have, do you keep track of how many children don't participate because they have other after-school activities that are eligible but don't?
I do have that. Yeah, we do have those numbers. We can set those to...
I was just curious.
Yeah, we do. We have the two kids each year who do turn it down just because of their obligations. It's fairly minimal, but there are some.
Do you have a threshold as to how many can be in the program each year?
No. We look at the top 12 to 15% of their performance. So, it really isn't a set number. It's looking at the top percent of the kids. In fact, my first year in the district, we actually ended up adding the additional sponsor at Hickory Grove.
Yeah.
Because the numbers were higher in that building. It grew so much that that 12 to 15% there was too sponsored at the time it wasn't enough.
Okay, yeah. Okay. Can we address the scholastic bowl while they're...
Yeah, of course. Okay. So scholastic bowl, we, at the year with scholastic bowl, we're all students at all the schools come together to meet at Ridgeview and they have four different, we have four different days and a tournament on all of those days. Their knowledge is put through the test, they're quizzed over a variety of subjects in time head-to-head competition. So that's nice because you get all of the students coming together, they get to see each other, and then it's finally a chance for the district to actually, you know, see what other kids are doing.
So the only way to be a part of scholastic bowl is if you're a part of the enrichment eagles?
At the elementary level, correct.
Maybe they could send that to us. What'd you say? Maybe they could just send that.
Well, you can see it if you follow the enrichment eagles or on Facebook if you'd like to follow.
We can send it to you.
Yeah. Yeah, don't worry about it.
Yeah, I know it was working.
It was working. Sorry.
It was working before you got here. I mean, she had it.
We just have a very good network.
So this program is really evolved and from its beginnings, it has really changed and like, these are really interesting topics that...
Yeah, I'm really proud of the work we did as a team this past spring to look at our program and reflect and really think, what can we do to improve and have the students be more engaged? Because we felt that maybe it was a little stagnant after being, you know, around for five years. It's always good to reflect on what's going well, like robotics and scholastic bowl, and then take a look at what can we do with the new technology that's available, making-making, Littlebits, that wasn't necessarily available at the time the program began. So it was a great time to step in and make some changes and I know the kids are so excited about it, so it's been really exciting this year.
It's very, it's a very nice program to offer and, and speaking of the teachers using it in the classroom, I know that some assignments that I've seen that have come home, like the Shark Tank type assignment that's being used in the regular classroom, so...
So initially, when we started this, when it was in its infant child stages and they were talking about it, one of, it would have been nice, we thought, I thought, to have it like during the school days. You asked about the end of school. And then like the classes where students who have mastered their concept will be pulled out so it would not always only be a certain group of kids, it could be any kids and it was really fluid, but the problem with that was that we have too many buildings and we couldn't just have one or two designated people and then it became, you know, how would we get all the students to one building? So ideally, that, that would be great, but we just didn't have the ability at the time to...
And you can't do it at that time, what's it called?
RTI.
RTI?
There is differentiation that takes place at this time, but I think to get into the depth of the things that they want to be able to do, that timeframe would be pretty quick during the day for a set period of time. I guess what we really wanted to know from the board is, you know, you had asked for this request and so does this, you know, fulfill what you were looking for or is there more information you want us to follow up with? I guess that was really wanting to know if there was any other interaction.
No, I think this is great. The only, you know, I guess my only, the only thought I have is how could we include more kids? Like you don't, this is so awesome, you don't want to leave anybody out of it. So I don't, you know, room, you know, people availability to do, you know, teach. There's all kinds of issues that I'm sure you have.
And materials, right.
Yeah, same materials. Right. And I don't know if you could open some of it up such as, what did you mention, Abby?
What?
Scholastic bowl, you know, where we were was open to the whole school or Battle of the Books, that's the entire school, but that still was at the end of the day or during lunch. I don't know if you'd be able to give me some...
I think, the challenges, the teachers already feel like it, this is my perception, but there's so many things we require to get into the day that to try and fit another thing in, I mean, could be challenging.
That lunch period's pretty short. Well, you don't have to do it lunch, it was just, you know, an example, like, it's so awesome, you just really want all kids to be, to benefit from some part of it, but I don't know.
And I will say, and I will say the one area that really is shifting in our curriculum right now, and I think Nina's even here today, she could attest to this, what we're doing in technology because we are shifting to one-to-one and things are changing, they took a look last spring as well at what they are doing in their scope and sequence and what they're doing with students because it's not necessarily, yes, they have to teach them the typing skills, there's some of that, but they too are doing a unit on coding and they are doing some other things to incorporate many of the skills that you're seeing and that does reach all of our K5 students currently. So that is a time in the day where that's really being addressed and they can look at some of those skills. It's not scholastic bowl, but it is some of the skills that they're talking about here as well.
May I ask, the person who was championing the robotics part?
Yeah.
Is that a Caterpillar engineer?
He is, he's a Caterpillar employee and he has a student who's currently in 6th grade and another student who is a freshman and he heads the robotics team at DMS. And I can't speak enough for how much he dedicates to the program. He comes to every Tuesday session and those sessions, he gets there at 2:30 to help start setting up with the help of a few parent volunteers and then he stays until after 4:30 to help break it down. And he is an invaluable resource for that program. Yeah.
Heather, is there ever anything you could do during the summer, like an enrichment camp of some sort?
Definitely.
And then we could include more kids.
That's a good idea.
That would be a great idea. I like that.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you so much.
Come talk to me later, ask me about like the whole summer program, Algebra, Science, our experience, I can share that. It's very interesting.
Okay. And now, Mrs. Hart will answer any questions regarding the headlights protocol and procedures per the board request from the August Board of Education meeting. I don't want to stand up. I said I don't want to stand up.
Oh, that's fine.
Okay. Did you want Alyssa to kind of review what we do now and then open it up for discussion or...
I've read, I've read it and I'm the one who asked for this. I've received a lot of feedback from parents and my own personal experience, which doesn't mean I'm an expert, but I do feel I could write a dissertation on this topic. And I, I was curious about the notification component and I feel that we owe it to our parents to give some type of general notification and not necessarily identifying the child, not necessarily identifying what room that child is in, but after dealing with this many, many years on, on the professional side, as a parent, I think I would appreciate some type of notification. And I know this is probably going to be a lengthy discussion, something that maybe we can, you know, touch on tonight and possibly come up with a recommendation later, but that is my goal in bringing this up. I, I do feel that general notification is, is within reason to ask. I, I know that it says you encourage parents to pick the child up and then possibly if they don't, they can stay in the classroom, ride the bus home, all of that. I am curious to know what we do with other similar situations like scabies, ringworm and all those are not really life-threatening, although ringworm could be. But, you know, I just feel that the notification component can, can be added here in this incident. I don't believe that, you know, children should be embarrassed. I spent a career doing head checks in, in a district with a no-nit policy and I know that, that after speaking to someone who deals with biology and how it's treated, that, that the shampoo is used, it doesn't often work on a knit because it does not yet have a central nervous system and so therefore that's why we encourage parents to remove the knits. Also, I've seen it myself where children have had knits in their eyelashes and eyebrows and you can't shampoo those, so you have to use Vaseline and manually pick them out. So it is something that it's quite possible regardless of, of what your policy is here that if one head louse can lay up to 10 eggs a day and typically when I've checked children's heads with headlights, they have more than one, two or three. So you take three live head louse, then times 10 a day, that's 30 a day and two days is 60 eggs and so, you know, I just think that although it seems to be the trend now with, with what you're presenting, that they don't recommend excluding children, I feel the least we could do is give a general notification. So that was my rationale for, for asking this to be reviewed and as a building administrator, I know I would prefer to be able to give some type of general notification to my parents when, when I was a school principal. So I don't know how the staff feels, but I know that you've adopted this new policy and I came to question it, so...
And I, I reviewed the policy and I've reviewed, I know in the presentation, they had some school districts that do not notify and so I did follow up and they still do not notify. Morton did send over their policy, which is very similar to our policy, you know, we do not notify, they do not notify. Galesburg's policy was from 2004 and it hasn't changed and they do not notify as well.
I'm sure, and I'm sure I can find probably numerous schools in the area that, that still do notify, still ask children.
And I think you could find anything you're looking for. I do like that, you know, we don't want to exclude, we've had reports in the past where when we do notify, or when somebody finds out a student's sent home, then they're excluded and they're being picked on or their parents are like, "Don't sit by so-and-so, I heard they had lice," you know, and that's definitely not what we want. We don't want them missing school either. I did gather some, I know last year there was the documented cases, so far this year there's only been five documented cases. Most schools are zero, one has one, one school has four documented cases. So it's very low document, you know, documented cases and of course when they get an older grade, no one's going to report that to the office or, you know. And I think we're really good at not having head-to-head contact or sharing, people have their own headphones, they're not sharing. So I, I think our policy's great. I, I'm open for suggestions. If there is one suggestion I would have, it'd be school-wide notification, not grade level or classroom.
I was, I have to say that I agree with Abby. I came from a district that did classroom notification and it was confidential and I don't ever remember, I mean, it can get out, you can, you can protect it privately. and it was confidential and I don't ever remember, I mean, it can get out, you can, you can protect privacy so much. But as a parent, to help reduce the incidence and the spread, I certainly would, um, appreciate a notification so that I could look through my young students here to get rid of it. So we don't even, so they don't bring it home. You know, or pass it to other students and back to school. So, um, I, you know, in partnering, partnering with parents, you know, we talked about, I, I think it's important that we, that we do notify, um, parents and I would be. At a school-wide, it seems a little too vague when you look at some of the schools that we have. But I would be okay with like the third grade class, like the whole entire class, just so we could look for the parent.
The entire grade?
The entire grade, I'm sorry.
But I still think, I mean, third grade, they're all, they all go to lunch together, they all spend time together. They're all going to talk. So who's missing or who had been sent to the office?
Well, I'm not saying they have to be sent home because so what you have listed, there's a statement here that says the CDC and the American Academy of Pediatrics do not support the practice of school-wide classroom. So, um, I read through the CDC twice and the CDC does not mention anything about not supporting the practice of, that the head checks. I'm not sure about the AAP, um, but the CDC does not. Um, and they also speak against, both of them, um, do prefer the, like, students can stay in, they don't need to be sent home.
And I found that CDC headlights information for school and, um.
If you could forward that to me, because I looked for that just to make sure that it was, that it was.
And there's the note, um, knits policy should be discontinued, no net policies that require a child to be free of knits.
But they're not saying what notification. So we're talking about once, once we see a student, that we should actually partner with our parents, let them know so they can check their students.
And I think, like, the way I read it was they do not, the burden of unnecessary absenteeism for family communities far outweighs the risk associated with headlights. Um, and our policy, you know, states that they can be in school and they can return. It's just, you know, being in those classrooms, you know, the minute, um, we send that notification out, grade-wise, they're all going to talk about it. And, or some, a third grader, I mean, I have children and I know mine would be like, I got it, I got it. I'm the one who the note was sent home for, you know, and then I would just go, I got it, you know, I mean.
Well, not, I think that student's not going to be so, you know, hurt or.
Right. But then it becomes who's not going to play with them and who's going to exclude them and who doesn't want to sit by them for lunch? And then who's going to go home and say, oh, so-and-so told me they're the ones that had the headlights? And the parents are like, well, then you can't go to their house. I mean.
I would hope that's a rarity, that it would.
I would hope so too, but.
But as long as they're treated and they come back, then it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be a problem. Interestingly enough, I ran into, um, a worker on the public and she said she actually had headlights when she was younger. And I'm like, oh, interesting. So tell me about it. And she said that she was, you know, she was mortified that she had it. And so I said, okay, um, so today, would you, as a parent, would you want to be notified? And she said, yes. Even though I went through that, I would still want to be notified so that I can stop this burden.
And I feel as a parent, I would want to be notified, but as a social worker and in child, and in working in the social emotional piece, I totally agree with the not notification because I see the struggles it could cause on our children that we don't need to. And, and as a parent, I check my kids' heads, you know, heads regardless because I know they're not going to check in their classroom and we don't have enough staff to start checking. We know kids are going to get through regardless of checking or not checking of notification or not notifying. There are kids in school today that have lice and every parent should take that.
How do we stop this burden? If no one knows?
Yeah.
How do we stop it?
Yeah.
We can't.
Parents just have to check every day.
That is absolutely true, but parents with more than one, I certainly didn't check my, and I'm a nurse.
Yeah.
I didn't check my students.
Well, it is a parent's responsibility to check their child. Their communicable things that are going to be exposed to, whatever it is. But it is my desire to, to suggest that in the newsletter or, you know, some people would prefer it be the grade level and just one sent, note sent home to third grade or fourth grade. I always preferred sending a general notification in my weekly newsletter that just said, please be aware that we had an isolated incidence of headlights in the lower grades or the upper grades. So please be vigilant and check your child.
And, and school-wide, like on this.
We would send it in a school newsletter.
And I think.
But you'd say lower grades or upper grades?
Yes. We wouldn't identify what grade. Sometimes we wouldn't even say what grade. We would just say there was an i, one isolated incident. So please check your child.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think that's fine. You're not doing grade level, you're not doing one classroom. I totally would agree with that and it.
It just reminds people to do that.
Send that home every Friday.
Aren't we doing that already? Aren't we putting out, in fact, I saw a statement that came out and I know when we had this conversation last time you weren't here, but, um, I know one of the things they talked about, which was somewhat of a compromise, was that there is a statement that goes out district-wide and it is more of a preventative reminder that, you know, these things are going to happen and that we want you to be, you know, careful, check your kids, you know, kind of tell them not to share hats. Uh, make sure they're doing things that are, um, you're going, that are not going to, you know, create more of a epidemic or spread of this, right? And, and so I think that some of that is already being done. So there is information that's already being shared, you know, to your point in, in general.
The nurse.
That's just a general thing that they do. At the beginning of the year, we have the. There's a case. This would be, I think you're talking about.
But I don't, I don't think it's going to matter in the end because if you've got five cases out of four thousand plus kids, the timing on it is probably not going to make that big of a difference whether you send it out twice a year, once a semester.
I think you send it out when you have an incident.
Well, but if you have an incident, you're sending it district-wide. I don't see how that's.
Say it happens at Dunlap Grade School. So the Dunlap Grade School principal would put in the weekly newsletter, just a reminder, we had an isolated incident, please check your child. Period.
And if it goes building-wise, like, I mean, we've had five reported, there's going to be five notifications that went out this year. Um, which, uh, school-wide, I understand and I'm all for that. Um, but currently there's probably way more students that have it. So it's, it's not going to solve.
Right. And I guess, and I guess what I'm trying to understand, so I'm not against sending something, but I think, you know, targeting, one, I don't see where the benefit is. You were questioning how do you stop the spread? By the time you guys get notification, pull, you know, notify the parents and then turn around and send a letter out to the kids, you know, how much exposure has there truly been?
The whole class.
Right? I mean, kids have been in that classroom all week or whatever the case is by the time it's even identified, right? So I don't think that is going to be a solution to what we're trying to solve. Um, I, you know, I do agree with parents checking and if we can, you know, send things out to remind parents that these are the procedures, these are the things you should look for. Um, you know, please, you know, be diligent in making sure that you're kind of, you know, seeking to make sure your kid's safe with this problem. But, um, I don't know, I just, I'm looking for the benefit of getting that letter after the fact. So we don't, how many days has it been, you know?
Yeah, you know, and we're not going to solve it.
So in larger schools, are you going to get multiple notifications? Like, is it going to never end? Will it be?
Possibly, quite possibly.
The middle school, high schools have none reported. Kids are going to come to the office, teachers are going to turn them in and they're not being checked. So they probably have kids that come to school with lice they're just not caring about.
But it's more, uh, more lower grades, isn't it? The incidence of lice? Not necessarily, but you identify more, they share more, they're more tactile, they're more touchy-feely at the lower grade level. And, and possibly, you know.
Like on the front.
But, you know, you're, you're going to vacuum where they sat, you're going to tell your custodian. That's in the policy. When they come back, they need to be checked to be sure they were treated before they come back. So you're going to, you're going to isolate them on the back end, but not the front end. But I, I just feel a simple, uh, statement in the, in the principal newsletter or the teacher newsletter, whoever puts it out in the lower grades would, would be.
I'm okay with a simple statement and those five buildings would have sent out a simple statement that stated there was an isolated incident, please double-check your child.
And I still would prefer a classroom letter. I mean, I would even extend it to.
I would, I would not, I would not suggest that.
You know, I've done some research on this too. You know, my experience has been.
Teresa?
You know.
What do the teachers?
Teresa wanted to.
I'm sorry, I don't want to interrupt you.
That's all right.
I just did some research too, you know, and I, I, I went online just to see what was out there and what, and of course, there's no legislation or anything like that to tell us what we can, cannot do, right? We do have HIPAA guidelines. I got, I got three of my, my kids in the medical field, they tell me about HIPAA all the time, right? Where they learn about this. Now, I'm looking at a specific, uh, presentation and I don't have his names in front of it, but the professor, a doctor from Harvard, and he's part of the EPA, put a presentation out there. And one of the things for an unjustified response was violating that confidentiality by notifying students, other students and/or parents. And that's my biggest concern because I've asked folks out in the community as well. I said, would you want to know? They said, yes. I said, what if it was your child? Would you want that out? And they said, absolutely not. And I know, and I, you know, uh, it came up when we had this discussion, was it last year? When the nurses were here that said, at any given point in time, you can go into any of the grade schools, you're going to find it, correct? And I know we discussed, like Dawn said, there's a blog, I think it's a blog out there that we have, right? That at certain points in the years when, you know, you know, it's more prevalent, like after vacations, whatever it might be, uh, you know, when you're with a bunch, a larger group of people, that we put that out there to make everyone know, this is what you look for and this is what you do. So from, you know, from my, you know, as I researched this very quickly, looked at some of these presentations out here, every one of them was very, uh, it, it indicated the confidentiality was a big part. We should be going from this, you know, moving forward as to what it should be. So I, I think there's a lot of good information out there from a lot of very, uh, you know, educated folks out there. Maybe he's from Harvard that put this presentation out there and I can send that out too. But that's just from my viewpoint. I think more of it is the HIPAA confidentiality thing because just like you said, kids talk. Not only kids are talking, but I think there's parents saying, hey, who is it? Right? So that would be my biggest concern.
Can you talk to the teachers or the principals in regards to what they want?
In my seven years in the district, I've never had one teacher approach about concerns or concerns or mention that they're concerned or they're, they feel like they can't do their job. I don't know of anybody else.
So would you be okay with a building, a school, building-wide?
Building-wide? I would be okay with the building-wide. I think that then wouldn't pinpoint or be able to identify any child.
Sounds like it could compromise.
Yeah, and I, I, I think I, I think I saw, there was an EPA webinar, I think I saw that last year. So I know what you're referring to. And, and I also think that there is no government regulation, you know, or medical association that says, you know, a no-letter policy. But there's no organization, medical or government, that says you should notify. So there's no guidance on this. And so, you know, like you mentioned, you can find whatever you want on the internet and you can find schools that do it and not. And I think it comes down to a balance between confidentiality of students, your child as a parent, and then other parents' rights, no. And, and so there's an argument both ways and you have to figure out the balance between those. And I know this has been an issue, parents will want to know, but again, you wouldn't want your child's confidentiality breached, right?
Yeah, I think you would.
So I think, but, so I think it's a balance. And so if we're trying to find some, you know, way to maybe balance those equally, then looking at the school-wide would be the minimal. I mean, going any lower than that to the class level, I think it's too much of a confidentiality risk. And the social emotional issues are really high. And you're going, you know, with younger kids. So I, I appreciate you, you know, being willing to, you know, look at both sides and, and you're comfortable with the school-wide notification.
Comfortable with school.
If that's something that we then do, do, I also think we need to review this. I mean, if it becomes an issue and there's confidentiality issues and parents complain, then I think we need to revisit it. Because now we're not balancing it anymore. We're breaching someone's confidentiality.
Well, I don't know if we're really telling if we breach anyone's confidentiality.
No, if there's.
We're not giving names out, so I think that's.
No, but if it becomes an issue where a, a child is targeted and the parent complains, you know, to the district.
But we're not going to give any names out, so we're not breaching.
Have you seen, have you seen the notifications if someone has meningitis or something?
How are you breaching one's confidentiality?
If the kids start talking about it and then the parent's going to complain, hey, my kid's being targeted, my, my kid's bullied.
District has breached.
No, okay, not in a legal sense, guys. I mean, but just if we have a parent complaint that, you know, my, my kid's being targeted and bullied, then I think we, we gotta look at this again.
Right. I mean, ultimately, we want to, we want to protect the students. Regardless of any, any legal legalities, we want to make sure that we are being, you know, cautious of the students', you know, social and emotional wellbeing. And, and, you know, unless we can, you know, I don't think sending a letter home is going to necessarily change the atmosphere for the other students. It'd be, it may be nice for some people to know that, okay, now I'm going to go check, but I think there's a, there's another side to that, right? Because then are the parents only going to be proactive in checking the kids and teaching them those safe habits when they get a letter? Because, oh, we're going to wait for the letter and now the letter says somebody has it, so now let me go check. Whereas opposed to if we're sending out these reminders every three months or quarterly and then they're saying, okay, let's be proactive, let's look at, make sure this is not happening in our classroom or, or with my kid and let me be, check that. And if there is an issue, I'm going to deal with it right away. Um, you know, you can look at it the other way too. If you, if we wait to get the letter, then you could have less, technically less proactive measures because everything's okay or else I would have gotten a letter, you know, so there's two sides to it.
Getting rid of the preventive.
No, no, and I think the nurse will, I mean, the nurse sends out stuff at the beginning of the year.
And the parents, and the parents have requested some type of notification. I think this is a very good compromise. Cheryl, you were there with the parent night when that was one of the questions they asked the four candidates. So I, it is an important issue to the parents. And I, and I just feel that, you know, some kind of general notification is a good compromise. We're not, we're not hurting anyone's feelings, we're not singling out any children, uh, but we are giving them the opportunity to know that it happened. And so therefore the parents could probably feel.
It sounds like there's consensus for a compromise.
So when you go out and talk to your, your staff, make sure that, that meets the building's needs, you know, touch with the principals and the teachers and sales, and maybe, maybe certain schools need to do something different.
Could be an electronic newsletter or a regular card.
And I think going back to your, if it does become that kids are being, that does go against the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act that if you, if you send out a lice alert and they do find out the name, you're breached, you are breached.
The district doesn't breach unless the district actually says who it is. You can't help what the kids do. It's like when we were doing suspensions and expulsions.
It's a similar, yeah, it's like a similar writing that I read, but I'm okay with the compromise and I will work with the principals to see how the best way is that we can.
So you'll bring us back something possibly building-wide or?
We'll try to put a board update.
Don't even need to tell us.
I'll put it in a board update.
Whatever we do, we'll do the same.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, and now we'll hold a discussion regarding the IASB resolutions. The delegate representing Dunlap will need to know which way to vote on any items that the board is not in agreement on with the IASB recommendations. So I guess the question is, uh, does anybody not disagree with the IASB recommendations for the positions?
Does anybody disagree?
Not disagree.
Yes.
What I said?
Okay. Does anybody disagree with the IASB recommendations? The only one I didn't understand was the charter school one, but, you know. It's, it's just tough the way it's written.
They do not recommend that we pass the charter school.
Right. We understood that part.
Just didn't understand.
Right. It just, it just says that the resolution is to adj, adopt legislation that would create a new methodology for funding charter schools, which would not have a negative financial impact on the host district. And then the recommendation is do not adopt.
And I think it's because they would receive more money if their revenue increased. Is that correct? Am I reading that correct?
Well, I, what I was confused about, Teresa, was is the reason why they think they'll receive less overall because just there'd be a separate line item for charter funding in the budget, the state budget? I mean, it says, um, if the local school district looked to raise revenue and provide additional resources to students from local sources, then the charter schools would receive an even larger share of the local district state funding.
Right.
Um, this is page.
Seventy-six. See, and I understood it as they could raise, they could raise their funds, they could increase their tax rate and not just that a school would receive that money, but it would be split amongst the public school and the charter.
The school amount would increase because they're getting an increase in revenue.
So, but in the first part, I didn't think that the money for the charter schools was explaining what it does. It says with respect to the state authority, um, limit the withholding of state funds from host school districts. Limit the withholding of state funds from host school districts in proportion to the per pupil expenditure. What does that mean?
It's been a while since I've reviewed this. I'm sorry. Maybe somewhere else.
Limit the withholding of state funds from host school districts in proportion to. Do you know?
I mean, it's not. So you couldn't charge more than the per pupil expenditure is what I'm reading.
Who could it?
What's that?
Who could it?
The host school.
Could not charge more.
Than the per pupil expenditure.
I don't know. I mean, it's not a big deal because, yeah, because we're just one little bit. I mean, it's not a big deal because, yeah, because we're just one little bit.
Can I just ask, the recommendation is to not adopt. Are you guys considering going against that and adopting it? She just wanted further clues.
I just don't know what it means.
Okay. I guess that's really the question.
Right, but I, I mean, if you don't know what it means, then not knowing whether you're bored against it.
But it wouldn't... But if they, if it doesn't pass, then it doesn't affect anyone anymore.
Yeah, so I'm okay with just not knowing what it is. Okay. Um, any other comments on those? Okay, information regarding future agenda items is available for the board's review. The board will review requested agenda items for future board meetings. Do you have any?
I did not.
I have one here.
Um, create a documented process when the board chooses to not follow the recommendation of the district experts, for example, attorney, financial advisors, et cetera. Provide transparency regarding decision-making process, especially when not following district expert advice outcomes. Document would provide a historical record and help protect the district by requiring a thoughtful process. Be a good topic for the entire board and fits under our fiscal responsibility.
Can you read the first part?
Sure. Um, create a documented process when the board chooses to not follow the recommendation of the district experts, such as attorney, financial advisor, et cetera. I don't know, Dawn, if you wanted to expand on that?
Yeah, if anybody has any questions. Basically, um, you know, I, I have some concerns, and I'm probably not the only one at this table, um, just about some of the processes that have been used by the board. And if there is going to be an event or situation in which we are making decisions, um, and that we're not following the advice of our district attorney or our financial administrator, then I think we owe to our district to be transparent about that and document the reasons why we're doing that. And that's because, you know, historically, the next time there's an election and there's a new board that's sitting at this table, and they assume that things are being done because that is what was recommended, that's what was advised by the experts that we hired to do those things, then that may not be the case. And this would provide a documented, um, a document to the process as to if our attorney tells us to do X, we choose to do Y, we should be able to articulate those reasons, and it should be documented in writing so that going forward, if there were to be an issue or a situation that came up, then you could go back to that document and you'd be able to pinpoint those reasons. Now, if you can't articulate it, you probably shouldn't be going against that expert advice. So I think it's a win-win, and I, I don't, I think it's just something that I'm noticing that we probably should have.
My question is, wouldn't that be in the minutes of the meetings? If the attorney gave advice and the board went against the advice of the attorney, that would be already documented, so that's...
Not necessarily, not necessarily. I'll, I'll try to answer here. Not necessarily, first of all, the minutes may not capture it at that time that the, that action item is happening. It may be separate. Most times we get our advice from our attorney either written or verbally through a meeting, and those minutes may be well before the action item that's gonna take place. So those may be very different and in different locations, making it less transparent for the public or the constituents to understand the process that took place. Uh, and, and sometimes we may not even talk to the attorney. We may just think we know better and take that action, and in that case, there would be no minutes because we would have not been advised by the attorney, or that advice would've been somewhere else. So I just think it's, uh, it would clean up the process and make sure there's transparency. Now, I would hope, as a board, this is not something we'd have to use very often because I don't think that's something that we should become, it should be a practice of ours. You know, people are in, in their positions for reasons. Now, if the seven of us think we know better and we want to do something different, then we should be confident in that approach, and you should be able to document it on paper.
Some of the documentation, though, would, would be considered, uh, closed session or, or private information if you're dealing with sensitive issues with personnel or other...
Some of it, some of it not. And so for the ones that are not, and you can document it, and if it's closed, then that document can go with the closed session materials, just as we do with any other...
So you're documenting it during closed session?
You can document it whenever you, just like we document a closed session, session minutes, that document would, could be attached to that. But it would give a rationale, which the minutes don't give a whole lot of information regarding how you came about the actions that you're taking.
Are you kind of just looking for a form of some sort?
Similar to what we do here.
This was the issue, this is, this was the decision of the board, this was the recommendation, and maybe this is the rationale of why the board chose to go a different direction, something to that effect.
So this is interesting because a long time ago, we used to have really thin minutes like we do now, and then, then the board came along and said, "We want some more meat because we want our public to know what's going on, why, you know, why did they vote that way, and just some more information." But we were advised not to do that by our lawyer for legal reasons, that they couldn't come back to harm us. Um, so...
Kind of along the same lines.
But maybe this is separate.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not sure your attorneys are gonna want their advice in the minutes either.
Yeah, and I think this is a bigger picture. I mean, I think attorneys, that's one thing, you know, but I also think administration recommendations, um, is, is maybe even more, you know, bigger. Financial particularly, I mean, we're the financial stores of the district, and of course, we want to be as transparent as possible because we're, you know, the stores of our stakeholders' money, you know? And also, I mean, we're here to, you know, what's in the best interest of the kids, right? So the education. And if we have administrators recommending something and we disagree by consensus, then in the spirit of transparency, we all should want it to be on record. And particularly, the concern would be, you know, eight years down the road, none of us are sitting at the table, and then people start saying, "Well, why did, you know, the buck ends up stopping there when it was our decision?" I think, though, I mean, we all might have an opinion, but I think this is a future agenda item for discussion, and so I think we just need to have a consensus that this is something that can be a future agenda item, and then we can all come to the table with our own thoughts. And we're all just kind of responding, but I do think that there's some really thoughtful dialogue that does need to take place of this issue.
And that's part of it. Part of it is, um, I think by having a process, maybe you prevent some of that because then you have to go through this process. No different than when we created this agenda request form. It made it so you didn't have seven people shouting out, "Oh, I want to hear about this, and I want to see that." You know, you have to document it, put it in, turn it in, and it just creates that thoughtful process that then requires you to have a little bit more, you know, a little bit more, um, accuracy and thinking before you're making that decision.
So why don't we have Lisa, I don't know, maybe you can wrap your head around what Dawn said. Maybe Dawn could talk to Lisa and then...
We'll bring it back next month with the recommendation.
Thank you. Okay, any other requested agenda items for this meeting?
Wait, is she gonna come back with a recommendation or just a discussion item?
Discussion item.
Uh, we can just, if you want us just to type up a discussion item, we can, but if you're...
Cause then we can, we all know what this is. Or just send that to us, and then we can come up, and then we just discuss it, of course.
Sure, and then Friday or later, Wednesday, no, whatever.
Yeah, but we'll put it on the agenda next week.
Right, then, yes, agenda requests.
Agenda item.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, this concludes the information discussion item segment of the meeting, and we will move on to the consent agenda. Are there any clarifications or discussion items regarding the consent agenda? Okay, if there are no clarifications or discussion items, I will ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda. I have a question.
Okay.
The bus bid, is that separate or is that included in the consent agenda for the...
Is the bus bid on the consent agenda?
The purchasing or is that later on?
It was a preparation. So just to put the bid out.
Right, okay, so that's...
To enable the...
So we will be allowing us to fulfill the schedule of replacement? That's my question. Is that, okay, all right, thank you. Thank you. But that's not really on the consent agenda. Okay. No, I'm not sure if it was or not. Okay, so it's, um, board policies, it's approval of open session minutes, it's DHS courses, it's, uh, expense reimbursement for board member, it's insurance renewal, and it's robotics overnight trip. Does anybody have any?
No. Abby, I think you're, what you're talking about may be just an information item this time.
Okay, yeah. Thank you. Okay, so is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda presented for the October 18th, 2017 Board of Education meeting.
Second. It's been moved by Cheryl Lu, seconded by Dawn Bozeman. Is there a discussion? Okay, roll call, vote please. Lu?
Aye.
Bozeman?
Aye.
Disharum?
Aye.
Holzhauzer?
Aye.
Humblez?
Aye.
Ree?
Aye.
Zouin?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. We'll move on to the action items segment of the meeting. Uh, the bill list, treasurer's report, and first quarter summary report are included in the board packet for review by the board. Mrs. Beverlin is available to answer any questions. Are there any questions? Um, I had a couple of questions, I think. Is this first quarter summary? Yeah, so I noticed we have a big balance in our savings account. I know part of that, eleven more million is gonna be invested, right, in short-term investments?
Yes, at the end of September, it was nine. It was down the week of October 3rd, the eleven, the additional eleven.
So that'll give us, what, nineteen million now in our savings account? I was just wondering, what's the, what's the recommended, uh, balance in a savings account? Is it so many months? Is there, is there some guideline?
Um, I have it so that it's about two or three months, so that we know if something comes up, we've got enough money to be able to cover expenses.
Okay, so just two to three months. So, but we, so we have nineteen million in our savings account. Is that, is that because when you do short-term investments, you have to do them for three months? Or what's the shortest?
Do them for three to six.
Okay.
But, um, as far as what do you mean by this, that's every fund. This, you're talking about the treasurer's report?
Um...
And our corporate savings account at the end fund at the end of September, we had fifteen million dollars, and I took eleven million of that and put it into cash on hand.
Okay, I guess I was looking at the one that shows thirty million in savings, so that's everything.
Yes, everything together. That's every fund added together.
And some of those funds, we can't put in short-term investments?
Some of them, I don't necessarily, we don't necessarily want in short-term investments because we may need the money.
Okay.
Does that...
Yeah.
But we talked, Scott, sorry to interrupt.
No, you go ahead.
But we talked about those, getting some reserve investment accounts for some of those, correct? Got some of them, right?
Yes, we did, and it's been on hold.
Since...
But yes, so like with transportation that has, it has a higher actual reserve amount, we're gonna act, we're going to eventually create another, like, Charles Schwab account for transportation so that we can put those in longer-term investments to make sure so we can get a better return. Right now, they're in short-term.
And then if we needed the money from short-term investments, and say it's in a CD or a treasury bond, how, what's the penalty? Can you get that money if you need it? And if you do get it, what's the penalty? If you take it out early?
You can get it, but you just will not get the same return on it.
Okay, so you just don't get the same, there's no, like, actual penalty? Except that you might not get as much as you would have if you kept it to term? Okay. And how many days does it take to get that?
How many days does it take to get that money?
Like, say we had an emergency.
I don't know, it's like, no, I don't know.
Okay, I was just curious. I mean, it's, it's not very long.
No.
It's not very long.
And overall, we're talking about, I think, we received information that the short-term investments are yielding not even a one percent or maybe at a one percent.
They're between 0.95 and 1.1% annual percentage yield.
So that's annual. So then if we're talking about a three-month investment, it's like a quarter of a percent, right?
But you're rolling it. You're rolling it.
Right, but, I mean, I do think we need to, you know, consider that, too.
But you're, yeah, so hopefully if you roll it enough, there's a number, eight million annually or something, one percent's eighty grand.
Yeah. Yeah, I think initially we were thinking it was a lot more. I think you mentioned two percent or something, and I just, I just want to clarify.
That's where we're at.
So, but, yeah, no, every dollar counts.
Okay. Any other questions about the, um, treasurer's report, bill list, or first quarter summary report?
So good job, the first quarter summary looks great. Expenses are down about two hundred per month, I think like six hundred. So my question to you is, July and August, how much are the ed fund expenses? Are they fairly close? Are those gonna be last because of the, the two months being off, people off work?
Um, wait, July is probably, is probably the low month because you don't have any support staff personnel that you're paying in July, and you don't have as many supplies in May. August is, August and September are big months.
Pretty solid.
Yeah.
So pretty close to your, okay.
Yeah. So do you anticipate being able to keep that trend? Or is it too early to tell?
It's too early to tell. Some of it's discretionary, so like Scott may spend his money now, and Bray may spend his money in the spring, so that a lot of those land on...
So I just want to say, good job on saving money. So we first, when, when I first got on and on, we, we never heard so much cost savings before. We were, you know, we was, you know, getting the school district up on mission, vision, mission, vision, value, goals, you know, alignment, curriculum, et cetera, and we had that shortfall. Um, and since then, we have heard nothing but cost saving, where you're trying to, you know, save this money anywhere you can and all kinds of initiatives. So it's, it's, I'm just sitting here listening to this, and I just kind of dawned on being like, oh, this is different, so thank you.
Our house is in order.
And thank you to the staff, too.
That's great, yeah.
Thank you. I just, I don't know.
I know.
Mrs. No.
Great report, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I'll ask for a motion to approve payment of the bills.
I move to approve payment of the bills in the amount of three million, two hundred and sixty-five thousand, eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars and sixty-six cents as presented.
Second. It's been moved by Brian Zouin, seconded by Teresa Holzhauzer. Is there a discussion? Roll call, vote please. Bozeman?
Aye.
Disharum?
Aye.
Holzhauzer?
Aye.
Humblez?
Aye.
Ree?
Aye.
Zouin?
Aye.
Lu?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. The district investment report is available in the packet for review. Mrs. Beverlin is available to answer any questions. Are there any questions? Okay, I will ask for a motion to appoint a board member as the district's delegate for the IASB joint annual conference.
I nominate Abby Humblez.
Is there, okay. It's been moved...
You can't back out now.
Well, I will be, I will be happy to go, but just know, fellow well, that I will not be able to stay for the entire thing because there are other things that, that I have been scheduled to see, so if you want your representative to only be there a portion of the time, I'll be happy to be that part-time representative. I don't think you can do it.
Yes, you can.
Uh, you have to vote, well, at least they expect you to vote, and you have to keep going in the room.
And as I said the last month, I will not be the delegate. Now I'm saying, if you are going to force me to be the delegate, that is the delegate you're going to have, so if you want to be there full-time, Dawn, I gladly nominate you to be the delegate.
Thank you, but I've done my time more than once. Would somebody else like to join?
I've already done it once. I have to. Okay, anybody else?
Looks like Karen.
I've done it.
I know, but you're leadership role, so we expect you to step up. I nominate Karen Disharun to serve as delegate, seeing that Abby Humbles can only be there part-time.
I, I'll, I'll second that, but not, cause I don't want to put you in the hot seat, but, I mean, I think as, you know, a board member, and we represent our school district, that somebody needs to be there.
I'm happy to do it.
You know, and maybe you guys could share it, so when she steps away, cause she wants to go to a seminar or whatever.
That'd be great, we could share it.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I think we need that.
We actually have a motion and a second.
Right.
And do we have a first motion and a second?
I think you need to vote on the first one.
Which one was the first one?
It's for Abby. But I think, what you're saying is that you're willing to do it for the remainder.
Okay, so should we appoint Abby and Cher, can we do that?
Oh, you mean, you would go in when she leaves?
Yeah.
I think you would have to appoint both of you, I guess.
Okay, so, so, if there's been a motion, wait, there's been a motion and a second, so let's vote. Okay, we need to vote on that. We need to vote on the Abby motion, just to be technical, so we'll vote.
Yes, to vote.
But we'll just, we'll just note that she cannot be full-time there, and then we'll do a second motion, is that what you want to do?
Okay, is that how we, I mean, how would you?
I would just do a motion to approve both.
Okay, we can do that. Okay, is there a motion to approve both?
I want to approve both Abby and Karen Disharun to serve as the delegate at the.
I think we already have one motion with a second, though, right?
Yeah, the first one. Why don't we vote the first one down?
You're right.
Let's vote the first one down.
Okay, so it's been moved by Beth Ree and seconded by who?
Cheryl.
Oh, okay, I didn't see that. Seconded by Cheryl to appoint Abby Humbles as the district's delegate for the IASB Joint Annual Convent Conference. Those in favor say aye. Those.
You don't need to do roll.
So let's do this.
No, no, no. You don't need to do roll call for this, because it's not for every month.
Renata, Renata has the, the regulations on this.
You don't need to do roll call on this, because it doesn't involve money.
So that's why.
It's an aye.
You can do like a aye.
Right, so that's why. Those oppose, those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay. Nay. The motion does not carry. Is there another motion? Cher.
Do we need to?
We have to vote the other one.
We gotta vote the other one out.
Did we have a second?
Yeah, we had a motion and a second.
Okay, there was a second motion by Dawn Bozeman to appoint Karen Disharun as the district's delegate for the IASB Joint Annual Conference, and that was seconded by Cheryl. Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay. Nay. The motion does not carry. Now, there was a motion by Cheryl.
I move to appoint both Abby and Karen Disharun in a shared role as the district delegates for the IASB Joint Annual Conference.
Okay, so moved by Cheryl, seconded, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dawn Bozeman. Those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say nay. The motion carries. Okay. Now, we need to have a discussion to decide whether to accept the proposal that was turned in after the deadline for the Investment Manager RFP, or to adhere to the deadline stated in the Investment Manager RFP. So Karen, I presume you're the person?
Do you have any further information? I don't really.
Well, how many RFPs did we receive?
We received, um, two by the deadline and one after the deadline.
And Cher, with us again, just so everyone hears, why the third came in late?
Um, the, the call that I had from the third one was because they didn't follow the guidelines of the RFP, and their legal counsel wouldn't sign off on the document he wanted to propose.
So they wanted to clarify? They want to straighten up and clarify their document?
There were, there were two different, they said that they just wanted clarification between two different sections of it. I explained that in an email that what the differences were, and actually that they were the same. And then, but in a phone conversation and talking, and that's the email that I sent out, was, it was, they did not follow the guidelines of the RFP, and their legal counsel would not prove it. And I even offered, said, you, I will take it as an alternate. I will take it as an alternate proposal, but I have to have it by the deadline.
What does that mean, alternate proposal?
They can write alternate, that it doesn't meet the guidelines, and we can review it as a different proposal.
Okay.
They said they still couldn't get their legal counsel to approve it on time, and I said, well, then can you rewrite the, um, can you rewrite it to meet the RFP guidelines? And they said, not in the time frame I have, I need an extension, so the deadline is. And so, we left it, I left it with them that, yeah, on the phone, that unless the board went a different way, that we wouldn't take their RFP. And then Friday, it was dropped off at the Disharun office.
Have you opened it?
No.
Karen, do you have a recommendation?
So, and so how long, this was two days after the deadline that then it was submitted?
Tell me again what the timeline was. When was it?
It was set out.
Just right after the last board meeting.
It was right, yeah.
So how much time did they have?
The last board meeting, so two and a half, three weeks to write it. Which were, but it typically like, yeah, for ten days, depending on what the detail of it was. So that's why it was longer, because they wanted to make sure they had plenty of time to, that anybody that was making it was having plenty of time. There was also a deadline in there as to when, if there were questions about the RFP that they were supposed to have asked prior, and that it was to be done in writing, so that that information could go back to everyone was putting in the proposal, and it would be an amendment to the RFP, and we did not get any of those questions from it.
And what date was that?
So part of me sees like red flags going up if they can't get it together, but on the other hand, were they goodwill trying to fulfill the?
What?
How many, how many, how many people reached out that wanted to put in an RFP, but didn't, and the reasons why?
I, isn't that kind of beyond the scope of what, I mean, I think our action items.
Well, I mean, we're talking about a huge investment here, so only have two, potentially maybe three. I mean, for us, I mean, this is a big deal. So, I just want to know what the reasons why others didn't want to participate, because it's our district's finances.
Right, right, I just want to make sure.
I want to make sure we have enough options to go through.
Well, maybe it speaks to if the RFP was hard to, hard, you know, difficult to, to write.
But, and I'm fine with that, but that's not what the action item is. The action item is to determine whether you want to open the third one. Whether the, whether the process follows through, and you take this round to get to the final answer, is different than deciding whether or not you want to open the RFP.
Let's do this, Karen.
No, I just meant, maybe it was hard for that, them to comply, because it was hard for everybody to comply. On time, you know, maybe it wasn't enough time, I don't know.
But what about the two people that did?
So Karen, maybe you could explain to us why we would want to grant them the extension and to open the third one?
And what your recommendation would not be?
Why you would not? Your recommendation would not be done. Okay, and reason being?
The deadline was, the, the deadline was the eleven. That's the process that we go through, and you're setting a huge precedent. Why can't somebody turn it in tomorrow, and we, we have to accept there? So what's the, the timeline that you would accept a late proposal? I think you're just creating a huge monster going forward.
So you think they weren't, they were maybe trying to manipulate the, the contract, the RFP?
The RFP was very difficult, from what I understand, to, to, that's why you had so few bids, is that correct?
Well, there's difficult, I talked, the only person that I talked to, that, I only talked to one person that said the RFP was difficult. And that, but the others said they don't provide those type of services, and they can't provide the breadth of services that the RFP requested. The breadth of services that the RFP requested was what the board wanted to see happen. So that is, that's why it was difficult. There were, it, it was long, but if I'm going to give somebody thirty-five million dollars, I want to know about them, and I want to know everything. If I'm going to give them the control to manage thirty-five million dollars, I want to know. I want their references, I want their history, I want everything. And I don't think that's too much to ask.
No, and I don't either, but I'm surprised I only got two that submitted on time. It seems thirty-five million dollars to the investment. You only had two, there had to be some reasons why.
I have a question just about process. So, either way, whatever decision, if we decided to accept it or not accept it, then what would be the next step?
Then I will, then I'll do the review of the proposals and bring back the recommendation to board as to how to proceed in November. Which, if we had an after-late proposal, is when we were going to talk about the RFPs.
Okay.
So.
And at that point, we would decide maybe to reopen it or change it, or?
Exactly.
So if you didn't like it, yeah.
Or change.
So really, the only thing tonight that we have to determine is whether or not to accept the late RFP.
Okay.
I have, I, I have some concerns about this whole process, to your point about the process. Um, you know, and I guess this, this weighs into my decision, which is why I'm asking these questions. I understand, we're just trying to decide whether we accept this or not. But you gave us a very detailed, um, email, which I appreciate, which gave, uh, all the information that was gathered prior to the late submission. And, um, I just think there, there are some potential conflict of interest and some concerns, appearance of impropriety here. I don't know, um, I don't know if anybody else is bothered by this, but reading this email, uh, Karen Beverlin, that you sent out to the board to give us the information regarding it, I mean, I don't know if there were conversations before this, but Karen Disharun, it seems like you were involved with this process, with this particular company, prior to the late submission. And looks like there was discussion there, and almost as if you were wanting them to get this extension prior to this day. Is that correct, the way I'm reading this?
No. I don't know.
You were on, you were on a message, um, way back before it was due, and you were included in the email. And I guess I'm not understanding, as a board, we do policy and govern, right? We're up here, this process is dealing with financials, Karen Beverlin has a, a whole of that. So how are we personally attached to messages that are then having to deal with the RFP and the creation of it, and when it's going to be turned in? Like, where, where is that connection? Do you know this person?
The email.
I think he CC'd me.
The email that I received first asking for the extension was CC'd to Karen.
Why, I don't, I guess why?
I don't know why.
As the board president.
Well, is there, let me ask this. Is there anybody at this table who knows this company particularly?
Which company is it?
I don't, I don't, Commerce, Commerce put it on there, too, we know lots of them.
Right, but lots of them were not bidding over vacuous to accept late payments. Lots of them were not CC'd on emails going back and forth, and trying to, it looks, appears to, win favor for this particular company. It's very alarming to me as a board member. I don't know if anybody else was alarmed, but this whole process has been alarming.
Well, Dawn, I think, I, the, I understand what you're saying. And I, I think that the thing I had maybe a little more concern about is that I think there was a phone conversation as well, asking, um, with a board member, asking whether, you know, they can submit late, can we extend the deadline? I mean, I think that was part of the email as well. That, to me, is a little more concerning.
I did not ask for the deadline to be extended. You know, I just said, what are you going to do, based on this email, because I was CC'd on it, so. And she, at that point, she said that she would bring it to the board for an action item, yeah.
I'm just a little confused. Does our board president have the ability to be contacted by constituents? And she couldn't talk directly with attorneys, our attorneys and council, so I guess, it sounds like you're trying to redefine what does a woman, a president?
Well, as president, I was not personally involved in actions that had to do with district, district finances, i.e., submitting an RFP for an investment portfolio. So I, I would know about that, because that's not a duty that I've taken on.
Well, we've never done.
And, well, and.
It's our first time.
But I'm just saying. That may be a mistake, too, but listen, what I'm saying here is that there is an appearance here, in my eyes. I'm only one person, you can ask others, but the fact that you were requesting, um, you were on the email, okay, so if, you know, if you just were CC'd on it just because, I don't think any other company had CC'd you on their request, but that's fine. And the fact that there was a problem, and the fact that then it looks like there was a phone conversation then an hour or so later, where you're requesting, you're asking about an extension.
Asking about whether an extension could be made.
And so, I mean, I guess, why would you be dealing with that level of this detail at that point?
Well, I was CC'd, so I'm just curious, you know, how she was going to respond, because sometimes the board president responds, so I wanted to know.
But do, well.
Is it even, is it even possible, and how are we going to address this question?
Okay, do you know this individual? I think we should have full disclosure.
I do.
So we have two board members at the table that know this individual.
Okay.
Right, okay, so then, and so then when we're. Okay, and that's fine, but.
And I know another person who.
Yeah, but the other people didn't come in late and then request to turn it in late, and then our business director specifically say, we have to stick to the deadline, because that's what's officially in the RFP, which was published in, in the newspaper. And then, that person still shows up two days later.
Is this something that we should be discussing in closed session?
I don't know that we can discuss it in closed.
Can we move forward on this and talk about it later?
I mean, it depends on whether we accept this or not, so it's kind of part of this conversation.
What, what I, I think is probably the proper course of action is it's an action item to determine whether we're going to accept the third bid.
That's right.
In the future, we're going to have a conversation, you know, and she'll get some representation. And this whole thing may be moot, but I think at this point, we need to just be, um, as, as a board, um, because we are going to be dealing with this down the road. You know, what's the best path forward? Um, there was a deadline, it wasn't met. I'm not sure it's material whether it wasn't met before one hour.
I think we can just move forward, I think we can do the vote. I don't think any one of us is in support of accepting this.
Okay, I was going to say, cause if there's a deadline.
Didn't the attorney say you could do whatever the board decides to do?
Yeah, so I just wanted to give my piece, is that.
Yeah, but that, that, I mean, I just, I just want to make sure that we're clear. And we, you can, if you can respond to email, we can have the, or questions, I know I had some questions before about some things, but if there is a process and we follow it, then I don't, I just don't think, as a board, I think we need to caution ourselves from stepping over that line. And, and I've seen it more than once, more than twice at this point, where we're infringing upon the experts of the district, and guiding them in a way that is perhaps not the way that they would recommend, or that, you know, district advisors, i.e. attorneys, have recommended us in that path.
I, I did not recommend a course of action, I just wanted to know what Karen's recommendation was, since I was CC'd.
But still, even, even inquiring about things and, and, you know, requesting certain things is, you know, it can give that appearance.
Okay, so can I go forward and move to not approve the acceptance of the Chapin Davis Investment Management's late submission of their proposal in response to the Investment Manager request for proposals?
Yes, that can do that. Okay, it's been moved by Beth Ree, seconded by Abby Humbles, to not accept the Chapin Davis Investment Management's late submission of their proposal in response to the Investment Manager request for proposals. Roll call vote, or discussion? Roll call vote please. Disharun?
Aye.
Holshausser?
Aye.
Humbles?
Aye.
Ree?
Aye.
Zawin?
Aye.
Blue?
Aye.
Bozeman?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Information regarding the district, district office lease renewal is included in the board packet for review by the board. Mrs. Beverlin is available to answer questions. Are there any questions? Okay, I'll ask for a motion to approve the district office lease renewal as presented.
I move to approve the district office lease renewal as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Teresa Holshausser, seconded by Cheryl Blue. Is there a discussion? Okay, roll call vote. Holshausser?
Aye.
Humbles?
No.
Ree?
Aye.
Zawin?
No.
Blue?
Aye.
Bozeman?
Aye.
Disharun?
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries. This concludes the action items segment of the meeting, and the board will move into closed session. I will ask for a motion to adjourn to closed session.
I move to adjourn to closed session for the following purposes, as stated in the Open Meetings Act. Student disciplinary cases, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity, and discussion of minutes of meetings lawfully closed.
Second. It's been moved by Beth Ree, seconded by Cheryl Blue. Is there a discussion? Roll call vote. Humbles?
Aye.
Ree?
Aye.
Zawin?
Aye.
Blue?
Aye.
Bozeman?
Aye.
Disharun?
Aye.
Holshausser?
Aye.
Motion carries, we are adjourned to closed session.